To go?
Yes, we are.
All right. Then if I, I would like to call the meeting in order, ask you all to rise so that we can say the pledge. Laurie, if you would lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to take a moment and let everybody know this is Teacher Appreciation Week, so let's take a chance to make sure that you thank any teacher that you meet along the way for all they've done to serve our community. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have some recognition, and we have recognition for the Fairfield High School, Fairfield High School Boys Varsity Hockey Team that won the state Division II Ice Hockey Championship. Are they here?
Oh, yeah.
How many are there?
A bunch.
About thirty, Jerry.
Great. Wide angle.
Go on, um, why don't you guys, I want to get out, please. Come in here and go around this way behind the selectmen, because that way we can see everybody equally.
Okay.
Keep coming.
These guys off, oh, they do all.
Good.
Tighten it up, fellas. Okay, stop, okay, stop there. Do it again, keep going. And do you have a coach?
Um, sort of.
We are recording this.
See that team captain's gonna speak?
Charlie.
Take your seats in here. Not in that, you know, just careful, this is my goal and policy.
Not here.
Not here.
Oh, wow, all right, interesting, all right. Well, guys, we're here to congratulate you and let you know that we're very proud of what your accomplishments are. I've got a few notes here, that this is the Fairfield High School Hockey Team, made up of players from both Ludo and Ward, and there are twenty-three players on the team led by Tom Roach, head coach, Brian Leach, assistant coach, Carl LaRouche, assistant coach, and Tristan Saldaña, your student manager. Tristan, all right. I want to thank Mike Baccarria, a parent of one of the players, who was very helpful in coordinating the team's celebration. Is Mike here?
No, he's not here.
Okay. Also want to thank Tom Emmendorfer, another parent, and the secretary of the team, who's been a tremendous help to everybody on the team. Is Tom here, perchance? Okay?[248.62][248.62](laughing) They really trust you guys.
Who drove the bus?
This year, this outstanding team went nineteen, five, and one, the most wins in program history. They beat, in the same season, Ridgefield, New Canaan, and St. Joe's, all-power teams in our county. On a Friday night in late March, in front of four thousand people, many of whom were from Fairfield, this spirited team beat North Branford at Ingalls Arena at Yale in a four-three overtime win to become Connecticut State Championships. And prior to that, the team had beaten Guilford, Cheshire, and Watertown in the playoffs. Now, let's hear from Charlie, team captain. Charlie, could you say a few words at the podium there? Tell us what the season has meant to you guys and what it's meant to you.
All right, so, well, I will start off by just saying thank you to the Board of Selectmen for recognizing the Ward and Ludo Co-op Hockey Team for our accomplishment this year. My teammates and coaches, we really appreciate the support the town has given us this year, and it's nice that people have finally realized that there's more than one hockey team in this town. Over the last couple of years, these juniors and seniors, we've really come a long way, we've gelled, become one unit, and the sophomores this year really fit right in. We had a ton of highlights this year, a couple of lowlights, I'm sure we all know, but I'm extremely proud to be part of this team and to be part of the current and future success of Fairfield Hockey. Thank you.
All right, well, congratulations.[351.12][351.12](applause) Now, in addition, well, first of all, I've opened up my colleagues, guys, do you have anything to add or say to that? Would you have some certificates to add?
Who's the goalie?
Mike.
Mike.
All right. You're actually skinny for a goalie, wouldn't you?[369.12][369.12](laughing) Take up more space there?
And who scored the goals in the championship game? That was a winning goal?
Uh, second.
Second?
Yeah.
Well, technically, they won by one all of them.
Right. Well, good job, guys. We appreciate the effort, and good luck next year. It's back-to-back, right?
Now, given you guys are both high schools, how do you get together for practice? How do you coordinate that? Is that an extra challenge?
No, it's all planned by coaches, athletic director. They say, show up at this time and...
Everybody magically shows up when you're supposed to. Yes, good, your parents don't have anything to do with that, right?
No.
Okay, just checking, just checking, and, you know, parents should all be thanked for the effort they put together, because it's not easy when everybody's at different schools and different buildings, and since there is no ice rink at either high school, that means you're... Where do you skate mostly?
Wonderland of ice in British Columbia.
Okay, so you gotta go out of town just to get that done, so, good job all around, and again, extra thank you to the parents for putting all that together. We do have some certificates, I think the best thing is, Laurie, can you get around outside, Chris, maybe you and I can get around this side and see if we can get out in front and handies off. We want to make sure that we give you a momentum, and you know that the town is really proud of your efforts, and we hope we get to recognize the team back here again soon.
How many seniors on the team?
Eight.
Yeah, we did.
I don't know.
Say what, what we're gonna do is, is handies out in front, if you guys come by and pick them up, and then, I guess, we don't have any other space, you're gonna have to go back to your...
Sounds good.
Carla Rousch.
Carla Rousch.
Brian Leach, he's not here. Tom Roach is not here. Tristan is here![503.12][503.12](laughing) All right, congratulations! And the first certificate, one of the most important manager on the team. Good job, all right, thank you.[511.12][511.12](applause) Tiger Arms.
Thank you.
Kevin?
(laughing) Jake Delardi.
Yeah, Kevin, if you're gonna win many awards, you gotta get that spell phonetically.[561.12][561.12](laughing) Owen Emmendorfer.
Not here.
Okay. Jake Foose.
Not here.
Gareth Gassetta.
Not here.
Now, Mr. Captain, you're gonna have to take these without that, right? We're putting that responsibility on you. Rutger Gallard. Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations.
Ryan Dove.
Not here.
Mike Grace. Congratulations. Dawson Gunn.
Congratulations.
Jack McCormick.
Not here.
Austin O'Brien.
Not here.
Good thing you didn't bring on the team.
I was just gonna say, they're not here.
Keegan O'Reilly.
Not here.
A lot of Irish guys playing hockey these days. Charlie Pippa. (applause) Errol Ram. Carson Rush.
Not here.
Calvin Sharp. Michael Shavinsky. Congratulations. Sam Shepard. Congratulations, Sam. Will Von Broddich. And Clint Wipkoff. And Jeremy Ziegler. All right, guys, great job again. And I should mention, you're welcome to stay around for the rest of the meeting, but it's not required.
Can we get a group hug, please?
I think so. Guys, why don't you come on over here in front one more time?
(inaudible).
You have some of the shorter guys in front? I think that's like just a...
Yes.
Yes.
Sam Shepard. Congratulations, Sam. Will Von Broddich. And Clint Wipkoff. And Jeremy Ziegler. All right, guys, great job again. And I should mention, you're welcome to stay around for the rest of the meeting, but it's not required. I think so. Guys, why don't you come on over here in front one more time?
(inaudible).
(inaudible).
You have some of the shorter guys in front?
I think that's like just a...
Yes, working on it.
Hey, you're welcome.
Thanks for coming. Okay, next item on the agenda is another recognition, and this is recognition of National Safe Boating Week. And we have Tim Burke, who's the fatilla commander from the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Seventy-Seven, based here in Fairfield. Ken Jacobs is also here, who is part of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary, and also Deputy Assistant National Commodore Division Chief and coordinator for the OX-04 and OX-10 Sea Schools, so, very good. Commander, would you like to come up and say a few words on?
Good evening, thank you for Selectmen and ladies and gentlemen in the room. We are here to say thank you mostly to the town of Fairfield. Auxiliary Seventy-Seven rents, if you will, a small building on the beach in Fairfield, and we hold our classes and we serve the public through the services that we offer. We have been teaching classes for probably thirty to forty years, and we do it four to six months out of the year. We have other responsibilities with the Coast Guard directly that we work for. We check the buoys that you know, that you see when you go out to South Benson, and if you look a little bit to your left around the lighthouse and over to the ferry area, those buoys were actually moved by Steve, who's in the back there somewhere, last year there was a problem with that. So, we're here mostly to say thank you very much for the building, we appreciate it, we use it, and National Safe Boating Week is May twenty-one to twenty-seven. Ourselves and the other agencies represented tonight, later on, will speak about the importance of safe boating in Fairfield. Fairfield has a lot of waterfront, whether it's on the lakes, the rivers, or the beach itself. There's a lot of people, a lot of motor boats, sailboats, and the sailing school that we have here, and the Coast Guard Auxiliary is here to do nothing more, to help and assist the town of Fairfield and the citizens of Fairfield and surrounding. To speak a little bit more about the Coast Guard Auxiliary itself, Ken Jacobs?
Thank you. So, I guess my role is really to talk a little more about what the organization is, because there seems to be some question. So, the Coast Guard Auxiliary, created by an active Congress in nineteen thirty-nine as a force multiplier for the United States Coast Guard, we have about thirty thousand volunteer members of the Coast Guard Auxiliary around the United States. It is an arm of the United States Coast Guard, its members were activated during World War Two as military members to serve on active duty with the other Coast Guard members, has not been activated to that status since that time. We now serve in a role where we augment every mission of the Coast Guard except for law enforcement and military missions. So, National Safe Boating Week, very important to us and the Coast Guard Auxiliary. Coast Guard Auxiliary falls under the Office of Boating Safety for the United States Coast Guard, and we are very closely connected with that office, obviously. Two thousand fourteen, I'm sure you know that there were four thousand and sixty-four boating accidents in the United States, which resulted in six hundred and ten deaths on the water, and so, National Safe Boating Week is an effort to draw attention to the fact that we have a lot of boating accidents, and that the Coast Guard, the Coast Guard Auxiliary, and other partnering agencies are working together to try and mitigate that, and to try and reduce the number of on-the-water accidents and on-the-water deaths related to those accidents, so.
Good. Is the Auxiliary something like the Reserve? My brother was in the Army Reserves. Is the Auxiliary something like the reserves, or is it a different function entirely?
So, the Coast Guard Auxiliary was actually formed as the Coast Guard Reserve in nineteen thirty-nine, but with the advent of World War Two, the Coast Guard decided that it needed an active paid reserve, and so, it created the paid reserve and changed the name from Reserve to Auxiliary. We're very much like the reserves, except that we're a volunteer component of the United States Coast Guard.
Okay, very good. Any questions, guys?
Thanks for keeping our water safe. It's our pleasure. It's an honor for us to be a part of this community.
We do have a, I'm sorry, Laurie, did you have any?
No, that's good.
Okay. We do have a proclamation for you from the town, basically recognizing May twenty-first through May twenty-seventh as National Safe Boating Week throughout the town of Fairfield.
Fabulous.
So, it, Commander, may I offer this to you? Can I? We can present this to both of you officially on behalf of the town.
Thank you.
Thanks, my pleasure.
Thanks very much.
Next up, we have the minutes to, the motion to consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting of April sixth, two thousand sixteen. We have a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any edits or changes?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And next up, we have appointments. Would you like to do these one at a time or both together?
Together, thanks.
Okay. Here, consider and act upon the following appointments to the Golf Commission. Paul Gleason, Republican, one nineteen Hunter Road for a term of four sixteen to four twenty-one, and this is to fill a vacancy for Ryan Morris, whose term expired, and to Patrice Klein, a Democrat, seventy-three Alden Street, for a term of four sixteen to four twenty-one, to fill a vacancy for Edna Albrecht, whose term expired. And I think, I know Patrice is here, is, there we are, good, very good. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'd like to thank them both for stepping forward to serve. Appreciate your time and effort.
I'm excited about adding Paul Gleason to the Golf Commission. I've known him since I was a little kid. He was my baseball coach for Junior Bay Brewth.
Oh, wow.
Helped lead us to an undefeated season from the Goldriff Field, which I know they still talk about today, and helped develop talents. He's been a very active member in the community since I was a little kid, so I'm excited to have him as a voice on the Golf Commission moving forward.
All right, well, thank you, thank you. And Patty Klein, I've known for a long time, in fact, we grew up in the same neighborhood. Her dad worked at the golf course for a number of years and was very active there, and also very active in community service, specifically the Republican Party, for a number of years. And I served on the RTM with her dad back in the early eighties, I'll say. That's as far as, as specific as I'm gonna get. But, again, Patty, thank you for continuing your family tradition of continuing to volunteer, and Paul, also thank you very much for your contributions. Any further comments? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor? Oh, nobody made a motion? Sorry.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second it.
Good. So, the motion is now before us. Any further comments?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations both of you, and thank you.
In light of Teacher Appreciation Week, I'd like to go home and hand up some pretzels for the high school.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, to hear a report from the Police Marine Unit regarding a public awareness campaign to kick off National Safe Boating Week. And we've got Officer Wilkie. There he is, all right. If you could come up to the podium and fill us in on what's going on.
What's going on? Thank you for having me tonight, Board of Selectmen, Mr. Tetrow, thank you. As you may or may not know, the Fairfield Police has had a marine unit on Long Island Sound for over fifty years now. We have over six hundred-plus boats just in South Benson alone, plus many more down at Southport in the public docks and Pequay Yacht Club. Having said that, Mr. Peterson, Don Peterson, who's in the audience, had an idea to have the Penfield Power Squadron do a little safety brief down at the marina on Saturday, May twenty-first, so I got the bright idea to embellish that into more of a bigger event, if you will. So, the public is invited, May twenty-first, down to South Benson Marina from nine to one. The Power Squadron will be there. We also have Bass Pro Shops partnering up to come down, bring some boats, set up a static display of boats, tables, tents, safety equipment. We also have CTO coming and waiting, oh, the Connecticut DEP Boating Safety Division is coming down to set up another static display as well.
Wow.
So, basically, what we're trying to do in the marine unit is spread awareness for boating safety. We have a very active coastline in Fairfield and Southport. We had an incident last year in July with two young girls in tubing. So, what the marine police try and do is educate through enforcement. We have many recreational boaters, which is ninety percent of the people out there, recreational boaters, that with no fault to their own, only touch the boat once a week, maybe if that, so they forget about the safety equipment that's required onboard, where to put it, and that's what they're, that's what we're there for, to remind the public and the boat owners what to do in cases of emergency, what to look out for, proper tubing and water skiing techniques out along our shoreline. So, we're looking forward to it. We have some press coverage, Channel Twelve has been contacted, some other media outlets as well, and I really would like to make it a large event for our town to kind of enhance our safety awareness to kick off National Safe Boating Week.
Okay, so that's on May twenty-first?
Yes, sir, May twenty-first.
Whereabouts?
Down at South Benson Marina.
South Benson Marina.
Right in the parking lot, right outside our building.
It's open to the public?
Open to the public.
Okay, very good.
Correct.
Any issues with parking permits or getting into the, down there?
It's still early in the season, usually, you know, it's before Memorial Day weekend, so, we have the whole entire open space area, which will be free from the winter storage area, all the boats will be out of there by then. Parking shouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
The marina guards are going to have to be lenient that day, because if you don't have a sticker, and my staff will be there, other police officers will be there checking, so, no one is abusing that, but there are, like, this event, we have to be lenient with the sticker process, and it's only from nine to one.
Yeah, I just don't want the public staying away, because if they don't have a sticker, they're concerned about that.
Right. The public is more than welcome to come down from nine to one and enjoy the festivities and check out what we do. And we'll also be giving free boating, boat inspections, so we come down and inspect your boat to make sure that you have all the required equipment, the equipment is not expired, like flares, make sure you have all the life jackets you need, throttle devices. That's a free service that the marine police offer. I really want to try and market that this year. People that have been down there for many years know that that's what we do, but we have a lot of new boaters this year that have come up on the slip list, so we do have a good handful of new people that just bought a boat, are still kind of unfamiliar with the way it works down there, so, yeah.
Very good. Any comments from the board?
Sounds like a great way to kick off the boating season, and I did not know you offered that service. We've been down there a few years.
Yeah.
So, that's good to know. I think, no, I think it sounds like a really great, great way to kick it off and to put the safety in the forefront and to let people know what services you do offer. Do you coordinate it all with the other guys who are here, with the auxiliary guys?
Well, we've been email coordinated, yeah. Again, this was his idea.
Yeah.
We've always done a little something that day, but not on the scale, like, the first thing I thought of was to include the new Bass Pro Shops. They said, absolutely, we'll be there with all our stuff. CTO, Southern Connecticut.
See, when you have a good idea, the next thing you know, you're running.
It just blossoms into something bigger and better, and now it's turning into a big family event. We're trying to get a food truck and reaching out to a couple of other vendors, West Marine and Stratford, so, the more the merrier, you know?
Excellent. All right.
Listen, I think it's great that you're offering the service. This is one of many things the Fairfield Police Department does to help out our residents. I know it's not you, but I also think they're doing a bike safety thing in the same...
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth, the week before, bike safety for kids at Jennings Beach.
And that's turning into a huge event. They're gonna be giving away free child safety helmets.
Yeah. So, that, I mean, it's fantastic, it just goes to, you know, you guys are very active in the community, I appreciate it, as a father of two young kids right now and a member of the Board of Selectmen, and continue the good work.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and great job, look forward to seeing you on the twenty-first. All right, next is, next up is item number eight.
The public is more than welcome to come down from 9:00 to 1:00 and enjoy the festivities and check out what we do. And we'll also be giving free boating -- boat inspections. So, we come down and inspect your boat to make sure that you have all the required equipment, the equipment is not expired, like flares. Make sure you have all the life jackets you need, throttle devices. That's a free service that the marine police offer. I really want to try and market that this year. People that have been down there for many years know that that's what we do, but we have a lot of new boaters this year that have come up on the slip list, so we do have a good handful of new people that just bought a boat, still kind of unfamiliar with the way it works down there, so, yeah.
Very good. Any comments from the board?
Sounds like a great way to kick off the boating season, and I did not know you offered that service. We've been down there a few years.
Yeah.
So, that's good to know. I think, no, I think it sounds like a really great, great way to kick it off and to put the safety in the forefront and to let people know what services you do offer. Do you coordinate at all with the other guys who are here, with the auxiliary guys?
Well, we've been email coordinated.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, this was his idea. We've always done a little something that day, but not on the scale. Like, the first thing I thought of was to include the new Bass Pro Shops. They said, absolutely, we'll be there with all our stuff. Cito, Southern Connecticut.
See, when you have a good idea, the next thing you know, you're running it.
It just blossoms into something bigger and better, and now it's turning into a big family event. We're trying to get a food truck and reaching out to a couple other vendors, West Marine and Stratford. So, the more the merrier, you know?
Excellent.
Listen, I think it's great that you're offering the service. This is one of many things the Fairfield Police Department does to help out our residents. I know it's not you, but I also think they're doing a bike safety thing in the same --
May 14th.
May 14th. The week before, bike safety for kids at Jennings Beach.
And that's turning into a huge event. They're going to be giving away free child safety helmets.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's fantastic. It just goes to, you know, you guys are very active in the community. I appreciate it as a father of two young kids right now and a member of the Board of Selectmen, and continue the good work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and great job. Look forward to seeing you on the 21st. All right, next is -- next up is item number eight, to hear a report from the Greater Bridgeport Youth Orchestra on contributions and benefits to Fairfield. I think we need a minute or so for some setup issues, so.
That's okay.
Go right ahead. Take your time.
Well, you can just take that.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And while we're waiting for Jerry to finish setup, I just want to welcome Chris Hissey, music director, and welcome to Dave Muller, GBYO Board President.
Actually, he was called out of town at the last minute. On business, so he's not here. But I'm Chris Heisey, the music director.
Okay.
And this is Beth Olman, our executive director.
All right. Hi, Beth, thank you for joining us today.
The computer locked. It wasn't supposed to do that, and I don't know what the password is.
Oh.
So.
We'll all know as soon as you type it in.
No, this is not on my computer. The tech guy left and said it wasn't going to lock, and it locked. So.
Is the password there, under the computer, on the computer?
I doubt it.
They write it sometimes.
Do you think it's one of these? You don't happen to have Dan's cell phone number, do you? I don't. I'm so sorry.
Might be one of those.
What?
Maybe it's one of those things on the -- because why would he have that little paper there?
I don't know. But I doubt it, because those are little, they're passwords.
Not in a lot of years, anyway.
Press Control, Alt-Delete to unlock it.
I did that. He had asked me for the password. Maybe if I tried it.
And it does say the caps locks were on?
You're running without the caps lock.
You'll still need a password.
Try it again, Beth, without the caps lock.
What?
The caps lock is on.
No, no, that's because the easy things that I was trying --
Oh, I see.
It's not going to go anywhere without the password. So, I just found my computer. I don't know, I don't have access. I'm not going to, we're not going to be able to project it, but Chris is still making the presentation.
Should I turn this off, then?
Yes.
Should we carry on?
Yeah, why don't we go ahead?
Hold on. Yeah.
Is this the PowerPoint you're going to use?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we can at least follow along.
Yes.
Okay, that works. I don't actually, I don't think I need it. I can read it off the notes. I mean, that's missing a couple slides.
About the number of students.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, thank you, Mr. Tetrow, Board of Selectmen, for having us today. We appreciate the time. We just want to talk a little bit about GBYO and the relationship that we've had with Fairfield for many, many years now. The Greater Bridgeport Youth Orchestra was founded in 1961. It was an arm or an extra, it was an extension of the Bridgeport Symphony when it was first founded and operated that way until the late 80s, early 90s. It was actually my father, Jim Heisey, who was the president of the board at the time, and the symphony, the Bridgeport Symphony was found itself to be in a little bit of financial hot water at the time. And both the symphony and the youth orchestra didn't want the youth orchestra affected, so they decided to separate the two entities. And at that point, GBYO started its own 501(c)(3) process. We were granted the status and became our own organization. It was at that time, also in 1991, that Bob Genualdi, the music director, who served for almost 30 years, who was the headmaster at Fairfield High School, and Dorothy Straub, who was the K-12 music coordinator in Fairfield for many years, they moved all of our activities, with the exception of the concerts that we play, into Fairfield. All of our rehearsals are held right now at Tomlinson Middle School. We have about 300 and, sorry, about 290 students who participate. 40% of all of our students live in Fairfield. It's 114 students and 97 families. Three of our teaching staff, myself included, grew up in Fairfield, were products of the Fairfield Music Department. And five of our board members live in Fairfield, including next year's board president. Her name is Katie Hune. So, we do have an active, active relationship in Fairfield. All of our GBYO musicians are required to participate in their music departments. There are 100 GBYO musicians in the Fairfield Public Schools, which greatly enhances the Fairfield Music Departments. You know, the music department in each of the high schools in Fairfield is around 200 students, so if there are 50 students each of those schools, it's a quarter of the students who are involved in the music department in Fairfield in each school are also a part of our organization. We, sorry, the, many of the GBYO musicians are recipients of scholarships from, through the public schools. They're involved in TRIM, which is the Music Honor Society. So, we definitely have an impact and an influence on those programs. And many of the Western Regional students, half of the Regional students, Western Regionals is a big statewide event. Western Regional Festival happens in Fairfield County, and then there's a state, all-state festival also for musicians. And half of the Western Regional students were from Ward this year, and there was another quarter from Ludlow, who were a part of our program. We offer free concerts to the town of Fairfield. We have chamber music groups that play throughout Fairfield. We participate in a long concert at Pequot Library. Just this past Saturday, we participated in the Earth Day Event at Fairfield High School. And we have a concerto competition as part of Music for Youth at Pequot Library every year, which is also a free concert that families attend. Parents from our organization from all over Fairfield and New Haven Counties come to Fairfield to shop and eat and experience Fairfield on Saturday mornings when we have our rehearsals. There are many, we sort of service 29 towns from around the state of Connecticut, and so when the parents come to drop off their students, many of them who live far away don't go home. They stay, they go downtown in Fairfield, they do, they do shop and eat, and then they come back and pick up their students. So, we're very proud of the work that we do here, and we thank Fairfield very, very much for the, for the home that you provide to us, and though we are the Greater Bridgeport Youth Orchestra, it's really, our home is here in Fairfield. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Any comments from the board?
Fantastic. Keep up the good work.
I have some music for you. You want to just hear a little?
Perhaps you could put it up next to the microphone up on the podium.
Sure.
I don't know if it will come through as the same quality.
This was from our last concert.
And this was a collaboration with the General Oil Drum Studio, which is a big organization. They live, they live just across the street from Fairfield and Bridgeport, right across from Tesco's.
What's your next big concert?
Next big concert is May 15th in the afternoon at the Klein Memorial Auditorium.
And then the following week, May 21st, we have our Pequot Library long concert, which is free and open to everybody. So, after they go to the Safe Boating Week.
And they can go.
Yeah, we're at 3:00 in the afternoon.
That's right.
21st is a busy day.
That's right.
Lloyd, did you have anything to add?
No, it's just, you know, phenomenal. I know a lot of kids over the years, my children in particular, but friends of theirs, you know, and we've been to the concerts and just seeing, you know, you guys in action. It's unbelievable.
Well, thank you.
The quality of the, I mean, the Fairfield Music Program is amazing, and what you guys do is compliments it nicely.
Yeah, a friend of mine is Mark Halsted.
Oh, sure.
So, I've been to a number of your concerts over the years. Phenomenal student talent, and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. And you declared a day in September as GBYO Day in Fairfield.
I did.
We very much appreciate that.
We laminated our proclamation.
Oh, great.
We'll have to do that again.
That would be good. That would be very good. All right. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
For telling us things.
Thanks, James.
And what do you say at the beginning of a music season? All the best, not break a leg?
Break a leg.
Break a leg?
Absolutely.
That works for musicians, too?
Oh, absolutely.
All right, well, break a leg.
Thank you. Well, actually, my mother, one time, right before Valentine's Day, had a concert on Valentine's Day. She sent me a Valentine's Day card that said, "Break a leg," and I fell down the stairs and broke my leg.
Oh.
True story.
Look, I believe in obeying your parents, but you took it too far.
That's right. But break a leg works very well. Thank you.
And thank you for sharing the CD with us as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is, item nine is the tax collector. To consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector and the amount recommended, may I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
I'll second it.
Is there an edit?
I'd like to make an amendment to remove the period at the end of the sentence and add a comma followed by the amount of $33,797.2. Period.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, the item as amended is before us. Any other discussion or amendments?
Nope.
So, we have, we have a --
Just vote on it, right?
We just need to vote on the amend, yeah, we need to vote on, is it, are we all in favor of the amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, item as amended is there. So, the, any further comment on that?
No.
All right. Shall we vote? Are we ready to vote on the item? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. It's item nine. And item 10 is a private executive session. We have two pending litigation claims. So, at this point, if I could ask anybody who's not directly involved as our attorney to leave the room? And if we could make sure our recording -- Thank you. It, I'd like a motion to bring us back into public session.
I'll make a motion.
A second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're back in a public session. In private session, no motions were made and no votes were taken. And looking at item one that we discussed, which is the Attorney Aiken's case, like a motion to, unless there's any further discussion, but I don't think we can, because we can't disclose anything here that would, everything we discuss here would be in public.
Right.
I don't think we want to do that.
Right.
So, I think we need a motion to accept the attorney's recommendation in case one.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then in case two, same motion, a motion to accept the attorney's recommendation in case two.
I'll do that.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That's done with this item.